Special meaning of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Let's do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to substitute, have for Richard Antonetti, Bob Marinero, and for Lou Cavallo, Jack McHugh, as commissioners tonight. All right. Do the roll call, please.
Rayman Antonetti.
Here.
Richard Antonetti, Andrew Myers.
Here.
Deandevito.
Here.
Jack McHugh.
Here.
Luis Pizito.
Here.
Bob Marinero.
Here.
Dave Pope. Lou Cavallo. Joseph Duba.
Okay. Tonight, we are going to have a continuation of the public hearing and a presentation by our land use consultant. And we'd like to start the meeting with our land use consultant. Go forward. Glenn, Glenn Chalder.
There you go. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, the commission. Thank you very much. It's nice to be here tonight. My name is Glenn Chalder from Planometrics. The commission asked me, following, I think, or at the December 7th meeting, to review applications you had received in October for the establishment of a planned development district regulation for the Sealy site in Watertown. I reviewed the materials, met with both the applicant and some of the neighbors who had testified at the public hearing, investigated various materials related to planned development districts, and put together the report, which I believe you have this evening and is part of the record for the application. I think what I'd like to do for people who may not have the report in front of them is summarize some of the initial pages and then focus in on what I think are the key elements of this. The first page is really just an introduction and overview of the application and the key dates. Pages two to three are an overview of the application that was submitted, what I think some of the key elements are for the commission to focus in on in terms of the three applications. The first application was amending the zoning regulations to establish the Sealy Oakville Center Planned Development District. The second application is to amend Section 2 of the regulations to add planned development district definition. And the third application to the commission is to amend the section with regard to drive-through facilities. Section 1.2 of the report, which is Page 3 and 4, summarizes the application materials that were submitted as part of the record by the applicant and also summarizes the major elements of the testimony of the public hearing back in December. I did watch the video to familiarize myself with the record. Starting on Page 5 is my analysis for your consideration as part of the application. I think the first part is the main parameters, which are really part and parcel of the application. Section 2.2 of the report summarizes the key provisions from the Plan of Conservation and Development that relate to this site. I think the key findings here overall is that there are a number of provisions in the P O C D supporting redevelopment of the parcel and putting it back into active use and finding the best pathway forward. And there are also provisions in the P O C D that are supporting the concept of design factors and really configuring a development program for the site that fits that particular location. Page 6 of the report summarizes the planned development district approach. A planned development district approach is really a site-specific or area-specific zoning regulation where the commission has the ability to establish specific standards for that site, which may not be applicable to other land in the vicinity and isn't subject to the uniformity provisions or concepts in typical zoning situations. As part of the applicant's testimony at the December 7th meeting, they mentioned that they thought that P D D was a good approach for this site. I would agree that I think the P D D, a planned development district approach, is a good approach for the redevelopment of this site. The applicants mentioned four towns near us that have used P D Ds successfully over the years. Those four towns were Southbury, Middlebury, Woodbury, and Nagatuck. I went and had a look at those regulations. And again, I think that the P D D approach for those communities is also an excellent way to proceed. The element that I wanted to bring to your attention is that those regulations in those other towns actually require the submission of a concept plan for the site. And the commission embraces the concept plan, and that sets the framework for the property. So, once that framework has been set, development plans which continue on that property in the future, whether it's one overall plan or a series of individual buildings, are judged as to their consistency with the approved master plan, and then it can proceed that way. So, the regulations submitted to you differs from those other towns is that it didn't require the submission of a design concept or preliminary concept plan. And as a result, was simply trying to jump to the provision that any future activities would be approved by site plan approval only. I'm sure the commission's aware. Site plan approval is a semi-discretionary type of situation with criteria in the regulations. The commission has some discretion. Site plan approval is really a situation where there's the commission does not have discretion to the same degree. So, I think in the development of this site, of this importance, in this location, to implement the plan of conservation and development, I think it would be worthwhile and useful for the commission to work with the applicant, to try to get to approval of a conceptual master plan that then, as they indicated as part of the hearing testimony, that they would like to be able to adapt to the market so that depending on what uses come along, they can get approval from the commission on a site plan basis. And I think within the overall parameters now of a master plan for the site, the footprints may be different. The footprints may move around, but the concept of circulation and buffers and building appearance, et cetera, can be established. So, I think there's an opportunity for both the applicants, for the town, for the neighborhood, to find common ground here, if the regulation, in fact, is set up that way. So, I think the conclusion for my analysis was that there are dozens of municipalities in Connecticut that are using the planned development district approach. And again, I think for this, the unique aspects of this parcel, I think it's the right direction for the commission to go. However, I'm not aware of any other situation in Connecticut where a P D D regulation doesn't require the submission of a master plan. So, at this time, the P D D is sort of a P D D in name only in the sense that the other ones actually contain the planned provision. In the hopes of advancing the conversation in my meeting with the applicants, I did share what ended up being Appendix E of this report, which starts on Page 18. This is a regulation for the town of Brooklyn, Connecticut. It's on the far, almost on the Rhode Island border. But I helped craft this regulation for them, and I've helped other communities do similar ones. This one just happened to show up on the planners' listserv not too too long ago. And so, again, I thought it could provide for the commission an overview of the types of parameters I think are important. I think there's language in here that's not appropriate, not applicable to Watertown. For example, the material in the regulations that talked about eligible areas. I think we're talking here about the eligible areas being this site, and the commission can craft other criteria. And I think particularly, again, on Page 18, Item 2.3, "The location of the proposed PDZ," is what they call it in Brooklyn, "is determined, shall be determined by the commission to be consistent with the objectives and recommendations of the P O C D." And again, I think there's enough recommendations in the P O C D that point in this direction. I think you've met the eligibility criteria. The key element of most P D Ds is a situation that essentially three applications come before the commission. One is the conceptual master plan. The second is what we would call a text change application. And then the third is the map amendment or map zoning change application. With approval of the master plan, the master plan becomes the text of the regulation. There's not paragraphs and words and lists and numbers and all of the other stuff. It's, this is the plan that was approved. And then, uses or activities which are considered and approved as part of the commission are part of that. And with that approval now of the master plan and then the text change, the third approval would be the map amendment. And so, the map amendment would become, if the commission elected to go this route, P D D number one in Watertown. And if you like the tool or comfortable with the tool in the future, you could create additional P D Ds in areas that are consistent with the objectives of the P O C D. So, I think that's the recommendation moving forward that I would suggest for your consideration as part of this. On Page 7 of the report is possible next steps, both for the commission and for the applicant. The challenge, in a sense, that we have here is that the Appendix E, if the commission elected to go that route, I think might be a big enough change that I don't think you can replace the applicant's submission with that text. It's probably too big. It wasn't properly noticed in terms of public hearing, et cetera. I'd have some concerns about that. And I'm not an attorney, so I can't really give you advice, but I did have some concerns about that. I think it might also be a challenge for the applicant to modify their proposal in accordance with my suggestion because that also wasn't properly noticed. And so, people might have looked at the old regulation or submitted a proposal and thought, "That was fine. They didn't have to be here, and now the language has changed in a material way." So, if I had a crystal ball or pixie dust, which I do not, I think my suggestion would be to sort of reset the process and get a P D D regulation either through the commission's own initiative, apply to yourselves to adopt a P D D, or encourage the applicant to perhaps move in that direction. Because I think that type of tool provides a better approach for the commission and for the community going forward. So, that's an overview of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission or anything else that may come up here this evening.
Okay. I'd like to hear from Attorney Pilosi or Mr. Lombard has any questions to address this first, you know? Thank you, Glenn.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and staff, Franklin Pilosi, on behalf of the applicant. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for this special meeting and this opportunity to comment on the consultant's report. I'd like to provide into this record some background information. Some of this information is a restatement of previous testimony, and some of it is additional or with a little bit more context. As we all know, this application proceeding is seeking to redevelop the so-called Sealy property. The present owner is Renaissance Galleria LLC, and the members of that LLC, Joseph Yaman, John Lombard, and Len Mecker. And these individuals have significant development achievements and credibility within the greater Waterbury area and throughout the state of Connecticut and in a number of other states. At an earlier public hearing session for the last application, someone asked, "Who is this Mecca guy?" Well, Mr. Mecca is a quality guy. He's a significant developer in the Waterbury area. And in the Waterbury newspaper of January 16th, 2023, there's an article about Mr. Mecca. And it states that he is going to receive the Malcolm Baldridge Award from the local Chamber of Commerce at an upcoming meeting. And they go through Mr. Mecca's achievements with his current affiliations with different organizations in Waterbury, United Way, Palace Theater, Wellness Behavioral, PAL, Boys Club, Westburg Scholarship, Holy Land, and so forth. And it talks about one of his most recent developments, which is an affordable housing development in Waterbury with a $10 million investment that where construction has recently been completed. So, Mr. Mecca is a quality guy, and I think Watertown has already experienced some quality credible development by Mr. Lombard and Mr. Yaman. The, this proposed commercial center is estimated to require an investment of $20 million to $25 million. That's the projected cost of what they expect to spend on this project. Our first public hearing session on December 7th, we discussed a couple of things. First, that the Sealy application was unanimously approved by this agency on August 4th, 2021. And the other Sealy history is that I think we all know, and maybe it doesn't have to be restated, but I'll state it briefly, is this property is a unique property in a bad way. The town has been seeking and pressuring Sealy for 30 years to clean it up. This town has, in the past, adopted a zoning regulation that basically made it impossible for prior developer that was planned on doing the remediation and developing it, and that couldn't happen because of a regulation by way of impediment that was put in the way of that. And when I talk about the history of zoning in Watertown, I mentioned some other projects that failed in Watertown. But I want to make sure I clearly state that no present member of this commission and no present member of zoning staff in Watertown had anything to do with the prior history of Watertown zoning, where I listed some projects that didn't go forward, such as the mall project, such as the industrial park that Heritage proposed. And I didn't mention last time, but I probably should mention again, that there was a second proposal to develop that same area where the mall was proposed out on 262 by Conover. And they came in with a credible application for a sizable, far less than the regional mall it was proposed, but a sizable commercial development. And for those that may recall, Conover at the time was one of the top commercial developers in the state of Connecticut. And they also proposed a commercial development at that site. And the application proceedings went on for so long that Conover just picked up. They went home one day and never came back. We had other zoning opportunities that did not go forward through no development of Watertown, except that maybe in two of these situations, the development proceedings took so long that the market conditions changed and the projects didn't go forward. But I think most of us can recall that not that many years ago, we spent $56 million approximately in upgrading three of our schools. At the time that was proposed, there were three projects that were coming before zoning agencies in Watertown. And it was projected that the tax income off of those three projects would match the school funding that was needed for those projects. And that was the Heritage Housing Development that didn't go forward because the market conditions changed. And that was the second opportunity lost to develop that site. I want to make clear Heritage did receive all their approvals, but the market conditions changed, and that project is still not developed. The second of the two, three projects was a wood burning power plant that was approved at the local level, not approved at the state level, and eventually they didn't proceed. And again, the third one that was at that time of the school funding was the Conover development that, as I mentioned, did not go forward. So, the school projects got approved and were all happy, at least I am, that they did get approved, and they came out quite nice. But the funding that was going to match it, again, didn't materialize. So, Watertown lost out again through no fault of zoning agencies, but just it didn't happen. There's another long list of development projects that did occur, but they were delayed for many, many reasons, not because of the zoning commission, but because of others that were involved at the time. So, the point I'm trying to make is that zoning decisions have consequences for all of us, and again, I mean, everybody in Watertown. The present application, in the opinion of the applicant, must be approved, notwithstanding the consultant's report. I want to restate a couple of comments from the December 7th public hearing session about nearby towns. And I want to clarify if I didn't clearly state this enough in the first place. Southbury has used the P D D approach for probably 30 years. And it is absolutely correct that in Southbury, you do have a comprehensive plan of what you want to do when you come in to do your P D D. Southbury has more than 20 P D Ds. And whenever you want to develop anything in Southbury, you typically start with a general statement of what you want to do. You work with the staff, and you propose a new P D D. And they've approved them as recently as the last couple of years. The other towns, Middlebury and Woodbury, do not use the P D D, but they use a very similar approach that I called a special zoning approach. In Woodbury, for 30 years or more, they rezone the center areas into two different districts, each with its own sub-districts. It's the middle quarter district and the main street design district. And they have probably six or so different districts within those two categories. And then, they have developed within those categories. But they did provide a special zoning situation as opposed to the typical zoning regulations like we have in Watertown. In Middlebury, it was, again, a different approach. Middlebury didn't use a P D D. What Middlebury did is they got together with some property owners and some developers and said, "What do you need to get some economic development going in Middlebury?" And what they all stated between the property owners and the developers is, "We need a zone change." And the biggest zone change occurred on Straits Turnpike. And as a result of that zone change, within two years of the zone change, they had 11 projects. And we all drive up and down Straits Turnpike in Middlebury, and we all see some pretty nice, new commercial development. And in at least one of those cases, they took a Watertown business over the line into Middlebury. I stated that Nagatuck, in Nagatuck, they had, they're kind of later to the game with P D Ds. They first started using P D Ds on Route 63, probably 15 or 20 years ago. But I mentioned at the last public hearing session that in the Waterbury newspaper, on Monday, November 28th, 2022, Nagatuck announced a new P D D for part of their downtown area. And this is probably the closest thing we have to the Sealy site. It's an old industrial part of Nagatuck. They label it Parcel D, Parcel B. They don't have anybody to develop that site yet. But in part of attracting somebody to develop that site, they established a new P D D. And the new P D D includes a development district for combined working service, shopping, retail, restaurant dining, entertainment, recreation, residential hotel, medical, technology, industry, educational, energy creation, office, and other compatible uses in a coordinated environment. Now, there's that vague standard, compatible uses. But in any event, every possible use known to man is included there because they need to encourage, in their view, a redevelopment of that downtown center that has been vacant for decades. And it goes on to talk about, they're looking to establish a combined downtown living, working, pedestrian-friendly, multi-mobile, restaurant, dining, entertainment, recreation. In other words, they don't have anybody. They don't have a comprehensive plan for this. But in order to go out and seek proposals to develop this site, the first thing they did was establish, establish this, this P D D. So, I want to clarify those, I stated that not, I didn't talk about a comprehensive plan being needed as part of a P D D for all four of those towns. I talked about the fact that we needed to consider a special zoning approach for something like the Sealy site. And maybe that could be expanded to other areas of the center of town. But most of the other areas of the center of the two towns we have are substantially developed. So, the Sealy site, again, it's different. And one of the big differences besides the environmental, but because of the environmental, we can't have residential. So, right there, one of the bigger uses that are incorporated into almost all redevelopment of downtown areas is residential. Waterbury, for the last four or five years, has been talking about finding ways to get more residential downtown. We can't do it on the Sealy site. We wish we could. It cannot be done. But otherwise, the Sealy application as presented does emphasize the pedestrian compatibility, the walkway to the center, back and forth, and to encourage that. And it is anticipated that if this project is developed, there will be a lot of pedestrian traffic from the center of Oakville and the nearby residential areas as well. Now, the consultant report specifically the applicant has some concerns about. And firstly is that in Section 2.2 at Page 5, the consultant correctly identifies the provisions from the comprehensive plan of development that we're required to take into account. Number one is the repurposing of industrial buildings presents a unique opportunity for this area. Well, we can't repurpose this building because the building's not there. Number two, redevelopment of the Sealy property is one of the town's development priorities. And that's what we're here to talk about. Three, the plan prioritizes development in this area with existing sewer and water infrastructure, particularly brownfield sites such as Sealy. So, again, it's a priority to get this site back in service, back on the tax rules. Number four is probably the most significant. And that is, the town should consider granting additional zoning flexibility to brownfield properties in order to remove one of the barriers to redevelopment. And again, the P O C D is telling us that we should consider flexibility in zoning to get this site developed. And incidentally, there's another comment in the consultant's report about the drive-throughs, and we did indicate a modification of Section 34.14. But I just want to mention that the applicant considers the P D D to be a separate self-contained zoning district. And if approved, anything in 34.4, I'm sorry, 34.14 would not, in our opinion, be applicable. The consultant report talks about the applicant may forge ahead with the present application. The applicant may withdraw. The applicant may have a significant modification. Or the applicant may adopt an approach such as Appendix E, which talks about a type of a planned development district that could be used. And the example is from apparently another town where that application or that type of an application proceeding exists or is proposed. The consultant statement, when we met with the consultant, stated that there was no conceptual plan or architectural submittals. And that may be so that the applicant didn't have. And that may be so that the applicant didn't have. But the applicant did submit a conceptual site plan and architecturals with the last application, and I'm going to resubmit those today with this application, so they'll be made part of the record. This conceptual site plan and architectural renderings were submitted as part of the last application. So I'll give these to Carol.
We'd like to see that site. Please. Is it a rendering or a site plan? Is it architectural rendering?
Yes.
All right, so let's call it what it is. It's an architectural rendering? We, you know, I got that. How is that? This is the existing.
I haven't.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So they were submitted to the consultant later the same day by Mr. Lombard, or Mr. Yaman, I believe, sent those on. The consultant stated that the proposed regulation as resubmitted may be vague. And we asked, we restated that when the old application was on appeal, that we discussed that situation with two different town attorneys. And it was agreed that a new application would be drafted and would be reviewed by two other town attorneys, two town attorneys, for additional comments before it was submitted. That was done. A new application, new regulation was drafted. It was submitted to two town attorneys. They had comments. We incorporated all of their comments into the new application. So the regulation as proposed now is the product of the two town attorneys approving it in every respect. It's the applicant's position that there are no vague or subjective provisions in this regulation. Every provision of this regulation is tied to a specific standard, an objective standard in your current regulations. We did ask the consultant if there were any specific recommendations that the consultant had that could be a result in improvements to the existing application, and we're not aware of any such response. The, again, zone changes are supposed to start with the plan of conservation and development. And again, we have the four recommendations in your plan of development that specifically identify Sealy as a priority for redevelopment. And it also, which is very unusual, but I suppose it's here for a reason, it states that the town should consider additional zoning flexibility to get this site developed. It's our opinion that the consultant report does not properly give credit to what the POCD tells us. Instead, I think what's recommended in this Exhibit E regulation is the exact opposite. It's the most extreme, inflexible approach imaginable to try to redevelop the Sealy site. This Exhibit E regulation, in the opinion of the applicant, is an absolute appropriate regulation if you're developing 10 acres in downtown Greenwich, or Westport, or Darien, or New Canaan. But it's the applicant's position that it's completely inappropriate and not needed for the Sealy site. This Exhibit E approach calls for a series of the five or six separate applications. It would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars for any applicant to follow that approach. It would take two to four years to go through all of those application documents, and application experts, and surveyors, and engineers, and so forth, to try to follow what is called for in Exhibit E. Again, it would add hundreds of thousands of dollars to the cost of the approvals. It would add two to four years to these application proceedings. Most significantly, again, it's expressly contrary to your own POCD, which tells us it's a priority, and it tells us that it needs flexible zoning. The applicant has proposed that flexible zoning. It's the opinion of the applicant that that flexible zoning will absolutely work for this site. I think it's also part of this record that you have credible developers with significant experience and the financial depth to get this project done. They've been successful throughout the state and in other states as well. This applicant is prepared to meet the priority of getting Sealy redeveloped. In conclusion, the applicant does not agree to change the application, except to remove any reference to the drive-through regulation because we think it's, in hindsight, not pertinent. The applicant does not want to grant any extensions past the February 1 extension that's already in place. And in closing, I'd like to think that the Sealy redevelopment should be a common goal and not an adversarial situation. We think the consultant's report has some good points, but we think it's simply too much and not appropriate for the Sealy site, and I don't think it takes into account the history of the Sealy site as it's been sort of a blight on this community for well over 30 years. And I think we have an opportunity to get it developed with the present flexible regulation that we provided. And again, that regulation is the product of a lot of work by three different attorneys, including two town attorneys. If there's any questions of the applicant, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
I'd like to ask the Vennish consultant to respond to your comments. Preliminary, and then reserve the right to ask you questions in a few moments.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there are some comments I would like to raise for the commission's consideration as part of this. The application that was submitted essentially replaces the zoning district that's there with a zoning district that allows a wide variety of uses by site plan approval only. Commission has no discretion, no opportunity to guide whatever would happen at that site. And the applicant's testimony here tonight talks about all of the strategies in the POCD that identify the Sealy site and why it should be redeveloped, and I support that. There's also six or seven recommendations in the POCD that talk about the importance of that site and its integration into the neighborhood. So I think that there should be flexibility granted for this site. I think here tonight now as part of the record, we have a conceptual site plan and some conceptual elevations, and that is a step in the right direction. So it's not going to take two to four years, and it's not going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars because we're already 50% of the way there. What the applicant needs to do is say, this is our preliminary intention, our concept for development of the site. And I think the architectural elevations in the site plan establish a framework moving forward, where they could be modified before submitting that as part of an application. And then at that point in time, both the commission, the applicant, and the community understand what would happen on the site. Right now, if the commission were to approve the applicant's submittal, you really have no sense of what's going to happen on the site, other than some historic impediments could be eliminated, and that might not be in the long-term best interest of the neighborhood. I wouldn't encourage the applicant to withdraw Section 3414 because even though this is a special zoning district, the other zoning regulations continue to apply. And so the parking standards continue to apply, and the prohibition on drive-throughs of the 500 feet. And I don't know exactly where on the site they're proposing drive-throughs, and it's quite possible that those drive-throughs could be more than 500 feet. But one of the things that Mark and I chatted about a little bit is how we measure that 500-foot distance. Is it measured property line to property line, or the actual drive-through to the actual drive-through? It's not clear. So I think it's in the applicant's best interest to modify their application to specifically state that 3414 doesn't apply in the PDD. And then we're not going to have questions like this in the future. So withdrawing that part of their application is not something I would advise or suggest. The fact that those site plans and architectural drawings were submitted for the record, I think is helpful for the commission, for the community, to understand what's being proposed. But based on the applicant's regulations, those renderings are pretty pictures. They're not having any impact or effect on what might happen at the site. It could be a, you remember the days of the warehouse food stores with the cinder block and the metal and, you know, crates of food and things like that? Those drawings provide no direction to the commission or to the community. And if something came in entirely differently, the commission would be powerless to say, well, that's not what you showed us before. That's not what you said you were going to do. And the issue is, well, conditions changed, and we felt we had to modify our plans to reflect the market. But that's not, in a sense, I think, the best way, given all the recommendations in the POCD, to guide the redevelopment of the site. I think the commission should try to find ways to grant the flexibility for a lot of things to happen at the site within some constraints, rather than bless something, a plan shows up down the road, and the commission doesn't know what that might be. There was a number of comments made also about the fact that this type of regulation, even though it's adopted for Brooklyn, Connecticut, which is a, you know, smaller town on the Rhode Island border, the examples that were thrown out were Darien, and New Canaan, and all the other towns. But the applicant's own testimony talked about Southbury and how Southbury does such a wonderful job with their regulation in 20 different times, and it's the default go-to in Southbury. And that's also because it results in a site plan and conceptual drawings. So I don't think it's fair for the applicant to try to pitch it both ways. That regulation is great for Southbury. That regulation might be great for Darien and New Canaan and other towns, but it's not right for Watertown. I think Watertown should have every right to expect the same type of success that Southbury has experienced. And I think the key element here is that there's a firm understanding of what's being proposed. So I would think that the applicant would want and deserves some flexibility in how to develop the site, but also should provide some level of commitment as to how they would approach this for the community. And I think once we find that happy place, I think we do have a framework for moving So I think overall, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think, despite the commentary here tonight that there's been input from other attorneys in terms of the crafting this regulation, and, you know, no issues on everything else, and that there are specific standards in the regulation, I might want you to recall my testimony to you, which is that the regulation allows a variety of things to happen with really no standards as to what it might be in the future. And so I think that it's important to find a situation that meets the objectives of the commission, of the community, of the applicant, but also of the residents and others nearby. I think it's possible to do that with a alternative form of a PDD regulation. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Attorney Pelosi, and then we're going to call our members of the public if you have any comments next.
Thank you. The applicant agrees to amend the application to affirmatively state that Section 34.14 does not apply to the PDD as presented. That was our original intent, and so now we'll clarify that by saying that the applicant proposes to amend the application to affirmatively state that Section 34.14 does not apply to the PDD application presently pending. Again, the only thing I can say in conclusion is, it's a unique site. Our plan of development recognizes it as a unique site. Our plan of development tells us that we should consider flexibility in zoning if we want to get it developed. And I respectfully, seems to me, the consultant report is recommending against the flexibility that the PDC calls for to develop, again, a troubled, unique site that's been begging for redevelopment for over 30 years. This is a lot different than any other town, and our approach is very similar to other towns with a little bit of flexibility. And that flexibility was stated as needed based upon the testimony from the members of the applicant entity, particularly during the last public hearing session, that in order to attract tenants in the present market conditions, the tenants want a zone site. The tenants want a guarantee that if they're going to sign up with you, they have a site that's going to be available to them within nine months. That's the benchmark that they all use. And unless you have a zoning regulation in place, you cannot guarantee any prospective tenant that that's what's going to happen. It's the market conditions that have to match the zoning situation on the site. And in the past, Watertown has lost a lot of opportunities because the zoning conditions did not yet match the market conditions, or the market conditions changed dramatically during application proceedings. So again, the applicant is urging you to follow your plan of development. The applicant believes that the regulation as proposed is totally appropriate for this unique site. And the applicant did, in fact, provide you a conceptual site plan, actually, there's a couple of different versions, and architectural renderings of what this is going to look like. There's no reason to believe whatsoever that this applicant is not a quality developer and is going to put a special, in a good way, project on this site. Thank you. Are there any questions for me?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hang on one second. Does any member of the commission have any questions now for the applicant? Or do you want to wait until after the public and then the commission comes to me? All right, we'll All right, we'll hold that to later. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll entertain members of the public. If anybody wants to come to the podium, state your name and address, and be brief. No disparaging remarks, please, okay? And keep it short if you can. Thank you.
David Mangle, 240 Riverside Street, Oakville, Connecticut. I've been on Riverside Street 66 years. I went to see a friend of mine today in Waterbury. She's in the convalescent home. She still owns quite a bit of land on Riverside Street, and she signed our petitions, and she's 94 years old with a sharp mind. Before I went there, I went to get her some donuts in a plaza on Reedville at Dunkin' Donuts. She likes jelly donuts. I went to this plaza, and I seen this plaza, and it's got big potholes like this, about that deep. I could lay down in them. Garbage all over the place. And I said, this person wants to come build in my town? You're going to have problems. I don't need that. I don't need the garbage blowing down in Oakville at all. Things got to be maintained after it's built, and it's got to be taken care of, and it's got to look good. Then you go to Woodbury. You look at Woodbury. Woodbury, their people are smart, Teddy, them people over there. In the back, all the buildings are behind, buildings in the front that look colonial, because it looks like Littreo. Down, it's not right in the center of town, but they got high LeBonds down there. It's set in the back. And that's a big main drag going through there. Then you take down in Southbury by senior Pancho's and down through there, that's a big main road, right alongside 84. That's a lot of room there. It's wide open. Oakville is a little tight-knit thing. I think you should do a traffic survey first, because you come out hillside, the little short street there. And then if you go to that light there, that light's going to keep changing, and it's going to keep jamming up the traffic in both ways. I come down Riverside Street yesterday around 11 o'clock to 1:00, I watched, and it gets jammed up in there, and it gets jammed up back up to about 150 feet down Riverside Street from Henry Street.
Mr. Mangle, if I may, do you have comments? We're trying to discuss the recommendations of the land use consultant.
I don't care what you're building.
We'd like to, if possible, to kind of direct you in that.
Yeah, but you've got other things to look at before you really get into it.
We've already had discussion of public hearings.
I know, I know.
On a lot of the.
Like I'm saying, it's a Nick tight-knit area, and why add more fuel to the fire?
We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes?
Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place. Before you start the timer on me, people couldn't be here tonight. Some people couldn't be here, they were sick. I was asked to read a letter on behalf of somebody. Can I do that as being for them?
Without counting your time? Yes.
Without counting my time?
Right.
Okay, give me just a moment. It is in my email. Okay, so it's dated January 25, 2023, to the Town of Watertown Planning and Zoning Commission, regarding application to develop Sealy property into retail space from David and Tracy Overbaugh, 23 Ball Farm Road, Oakville, Connecticut. Planning and zoning commission. I am unable to attend tonight's meeting due to illness, so have asked Catherine Camara to read this on our behalf. As the surrounding neighbors and I have stated over the past year and a half, the third-party consultant Glenn Chalder's report clearly backs up our statements and feelings on the proposed development. This also agrees with the study that was paid for by the town a few years back. The Sealy property, nor this section of Oakville, could handle what is vaguely proposed by Attorney Pillisi and his clients. Mr. Chalder has clearly pointed out that everything Attorney Pillisi presented at the last public meeting is incorrect in hearsay. Every single example of what Attorney Pillisi calls a P D D were all in areas with no surrounding neighborhoods. They were all in major business districts, all of them. This is a completely different situation. They are trying to drop a major plaza in a small neighborhood with very narrow, already heavily traveled streets. Mr. Chalder's report also clearly points out the current violation with the C V S drive-through that should not exist because it was built within 500 feet of the bank's drive-through that was already established. As all neighbors have agreed, we are not opposed to progress or something being built in that area, but we expect it to fit in with the area, small, quaint, zero drive-throughs, and zero fast-food restaurants. At the last meeting, I again asked any one of you on the committee to come over to our house and let us walk our backyard, look out the back windows of our house, and see just how close we are to this site. I would have walked with you through my other neighbors' yards so they could show you from their homes, as I figured none of you cared to do that. You volunteered to be on this committee to help the town and the townspeople, but I honestly must ask, whose best interests do you have? An outside developer or the people you live with?
All right, so now I let you read the letter, but again, the same rules apply, no disparaging comments.
I am only reading a letter.
That's disparaging comment about the commissioners. I will not tolerate that.
Sir.
So if you want to skip over that, I'll let you continue.
I never, I haven't even read the letter. I'm just reading as I'm sitting here, so it's not me.
Well, edit it.
Okay? I will have to, hold on, I'm trying to read as I'm going here. I mean, I don't know if this can.
Okay, Kath, we have the point. You want to, you can finish.
Again, I didn't write this, Mr. Antonasi. I'm just trying to read it, so please. This is not me, okay? I think I established that when I started reading it. Please do the right thing and do the traffic study, which will 100% back up all the actual data that has been provided to you already. Once you have that, you must deny the zoning amendment and do this right. Do it so that something is built that is beneficial to the town and the surrounding neighbors. All of you will live with the decision you make. Appease some wealthy developers and turn downtown Oakville into Waterbury light, or allow something that actually fits with the town and surrounding neighborhood. Thank you for listening. Dave and Tracy Overbaugh. Thank you.
Okay, now you can start on what you want to say.
Okay, give me a moment. All right. Again, that was not my comments. I hope you all understand that. I'm sorry. I wasn't even paying, I was just reading, so that's how that came out. Okay, so now, my comments are, I feel you must deny this application in full because it's not a P D D. There's no P. There's no plan. The applicant, we're not being told what the intention is, and by the way, the public has not seen the other drawings or renderings that you got. We didn't even see that. It was given to you, the public didn't see it. We're here for a public hearing, and we're not even being shown any of that. As far as the plan of conservation and development, I find it interesting that the applicant stops short of what's in Mr. Chalder's report at page five, the provisions supporting design Pedestrian scale and could be enhanced with streetscape improvements. We don't know what's going there. We don't know anything. Development should continue to respect local styles. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. Should be cohesive with its industrial village character. But what I find most important, and this is our P O C D, it is recommended that the town engage property owners and the public in the process. That's not talking about a public hearing. That's talking about a process. That's what a planned development district is, it's a process. All these other towns go through a process to come up with a plan. We're not having that here. We're having an applicant telling us, this is what I want to do, let me do it. That's not a planned development district. And in saying that it's going to take four or five years, or it's going to take all this time, that's what a planned development district is. It takes time. I don't think it's going to take four or five years, but it's a process that takes time to come up with what you're going to do there, and there's a plan, the big P, plan. So telling us that, and, you know, I might understand this, that I'm sure the applicant feels like this has been a long time, but there was an appeal, and that's what takes time, an appeal, and if there's another appeal, it'll be more time. So that, I get it, you feel like it's been a long time, but we can't look at what the appeal period time was to say, well, this is taking so long. That's completely separate. Yes, it takes a while to come up with a plan, and that's what planned development districts are. So I don't see how we can consider this at all, a planned development district. I know that we're saying, you know, it's been a priority for the town to develop Sealy. Well, Sealy was brown field, Sealy needed to be cleaned up. It was just cleaned up by D E P, only gave it the go, like, right before the first application came in. So to say that it's, you know, like, this has been sitting there, and it's been available and all, it hasn't been. And to say it's a priority, okay, if it's a priority, that's fine. That doesn't mean you jam it down the neighbors' throats and you put something in there because it's been a priority for a while. If it's such a priority, the priority should be to get it right, to do the right thing, to take the time. And I will say again, you've got to do a traffic study. There has to be a traffic study there that is a very tight, as Mr. Mangle said, you don't live around there. I don't know, maybe you go in and out of C V S. Go down there, go into J and R or the Jamaican restaurant, and sit for about 10 minutes, and watch what's going on down there, before you ever say you don't need a traffic study, because if you don't have an idea of what's going on right there, you can't possibly put anything on that property and feel like you're actually doing the right thing. You have to see what's going on down there as far as traffic. It needs a traffic study. I probably am out of time anyway, but I had a few more comments that I can't remember. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record state, Carol, that Commissioner Duva is here and has been here for the entire meeting, because when you called the roll call, he wasn't present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public have any comments? Okay. Commission members, do you have any questions of the applicant or the land use consultant? Please express them now.
Through the chair, I just had one, I guess. And this might be for you, Mark, but Mr. Pillisi had talked about having flexibility and that a tenant would want to be able to move in quickly. Would it be possible to have several layouts approved? Different options, so if they did get a possible tenant that they could select from the pre-approved options?
I think the basic idea is to have, it's a balancing act. I think the basic idea, of course, is to have a flexible outline, a flexible conceptual plan that shows the roadways, that shows the entrances, that shows the green space, that shows the buffers, and to that extent, I think those items would be relatively set in stone, so to speak. I don't, as everybody has said, this is a very small site, so I can't imagine that those basic portions of the site plan would change all that much. And then we try to build in some flexibility in terms of the internal layout of the site. If a particular plan is approved, there can be some flexibility in terms of coming back to the commission, and the applicant can make a case that, hey, these elements, these internal elements need to change because of the tenants or group of tenants, and the commission can have, can grant that flexibility, again, internally. But I think that the external, I'll call them the external elements, again, the entrances to the property, the roadways, the green spaces and all, would probably be somewhat basic and somewhat, I'll say inflexible for lack of a better term.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commission members have any questions? Yes, through the chair.
Yep. Which one?
Through the chair.
Yes. I'm a little confused with the Attorney Pillisi. Is this, are these, is this a site plan? Are these renderings? Is this an official site plan that you're presenting to the planning and zoning, and that's what the buildings are going to look like, where the buildings are going to be placed on the property? It shows an exit from the property onto Riverside Street? Is that where the plan is to be?
The applicant submitted with the last application, and we submitted tonight, several different versions of possible site plans of what they would look like. And the application as presented states that all site plan regulations and your regulations, all site plan standards are applicable. So any final site plan that comes in has to match all of your regulations. And when it comes to the traffic part of this, this site is subject to a State Traffic Commission permit. And at the end of the day, the State Traffic Commission will have the final say on any permit with respect to changing, if needed, traffic signals, adding traffic signals, directional signals, additional width of road at the entrance, and things of that nature. They all come not only as part of your site plan review, but it's a big part, and really the only part, of the State Traffic Commission statutes and regulations. And a project of this size at this location, a State Traffic Commission application and review and final permit is a big part of it. But again, the State Traffic Commission doesn't accept an application until you have a local approval. So whatever local approval is obtained from a site plan perspective, then has to go through the State Traffic Commission review, and they have the final say, for example, on your entrance, your configuration of your entrance, your width or expansion of roadway or entranceway, and signalization if needs to be changed or needs to be added. So there are already many, many checks and balances and safeguards in this application. Again, you have all of your objective standards and your site plan regulations, and you have a built-in statutory requirement of a State Traffic Commission review and permit. And those permits, I've never seen one that didn't come with recommendations. And those recommendations are really more in the nature of conditions, that if you want your project to be permitted, that's what you're going to do. So we have lots of checks and balances and safeguards already in place. And again, at the last application, we were asked, the applicant was asked, to submit a comprehensive plan vis-à-vis, we were told, just get us some conceptual site plans, and we did. We were asked to get some architectural renderings, and the applicant did. So the applicant has done everything that this commission or two town attorneys have asked to be done. And again, we urge that this application be approved. We think it's more than adequate, with more than adequate safeguards and protections. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Not, yeah, I have some comments. Does anybody else have any questions on the commission? All right, I have a question for the land use consultant and Mark. Is there a way to fast-track? Let's say that we had a plan, and they came in, and there was a different potential tenant that. at this site. Is there a way to fast-track approvals in a PDD?
I, Mr. Chairman, Glenn Chalder for the record. I like Mr. DeVito's question, I like Mark's response. I think we sometimes treat or consider a planned development district like it's one plan, and it's one thing. And I think it's quite possible under the PDD, and if Mr. Yaman shared drawings with me of conceptual site plans on the site, and there were at least two options on there, and it would seem to me that it is, was indicated, I think, by the commission, if the applicants are, want to be able to fast-track a tenant, they might come up with four different conceptual options for the property. Pretty much, there's two streets providing access, as Mark indicated, there's not too many options as to where the driveways are going to go. We got a pretty good sense of the traffic generation at the site, and how many lanes are going to be required, but the applicant could specify a realm of possibilities on the site plan, a realm of possibilities on the renderings, and then come in later on with essentially the preapproval, and you're now into a site plan, and under the statutes, you're supposed to be granting approval in 65 days. You can ask for extensions, et cetera, but if the applicant's desire is to be able to accommodate a tenant within nine months, approval of a master plan and a conceptual development program would actually allow you to now get your permit from the State Traffic Authority, and then all you need to do, you don't even have to go and ask for it, when a tenant shows up, you say, okay, we're going to take option C, this building, and the shape's a little bit different because, and you're in for site plan approval, and the architecturals are consistent, or slight modifications, the colors might change, or something else like that. And I think that that's the type of flexibility and the ability to fast-track, which could aid this type of situation, and again, address both elements of the P O C D. The strategy is about promoting redevelopment, but also the strategy is about having it fit into the neighborhood and be able to do that on a timely basis. I think Attorney Pillisi mentioned as part of his supplemental that, you know, all the site plan standards and the regulations are applicable, and the development has to meet the standards. There are no standards for design in the regulations, so I could turn that building upside down and tell you that that's my design for the building, and I don't think that's what we mean by that. The elevations there are showing your two-story elevations, and pretty much the site plan seems to indicate there's sort of like one-story retail elevation, so the renderings are pretty, but I'm not sure they really kind of reflect what might happen. But I think the commission could find a way to provide an envelope, as Mark indicated, we pretty much know where the driveways are going to be, we kind of know where the buffers are going to be, we have to know where the front yard landscaped areas are, and I think the level of detail that you have on those drawings is enough for the commission to feel comfortable with a conceptual master plan, to understand what could or should be developed, and what it will kind of look like. Boom, I think you got what you need, and I think the applicant now has carved out the flexibility they seek, they can go get the permit from the State Traffic Authority and be ready to rock and roll on driveway improvements as soon as a tenant shows up, and actually make the process shorter by investing a little bit of time upfront. So again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I think, I think an approach that advances a little bit more effort on the part of the applicant upfront to create a sea of possibilities, as Mr. DeVito indicated, could provide better understanding for the commission, for the community, and fast-track the approval later, so it's quite possible that any municipal approvals required, the site plan approval process could be completed within the 65-day window or even less, and you could be off and running. So I think, I think these are some of the issues for the commission to ponder as part of this.
Thanks. Any other commissioners have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just to add to that conversation?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
It's okay. It's a, it seems to be a common perception that the State, the State Traffic Commission, State DOT doesn't want to be engaged in the, in the planning process or in the process of review until the local authorities have made, have made their decision. I have had conversations with them and with various officials from the Thomaston branch, and they do say that, at least they say, that they'd really rather be engaged in the process on the, when the, when the, when the application is in front of the commission, they'd rather have it submitted to them at the same time so that they can be involved in the process, and they can make their recommendations while that process, while that local approval process is going on. Now, I can't, I can't back that up in terms of saying, oh, on X project, that's what happened, but that, and I've heard that from other, from other traffic engineers, that you know, the Traffic Commission does not want to hear, hear the, see the application until it's completely approved, but they've indicated otherwise to me, and I, and I think that it, it's worth exploring in terms of the local permitting process to get that going and maybe do that general traffic study right in the beginning and get them involved, and again, toward the goal of shortening up the timeframe for, for approval.
Well, that's very helpful, thank you. Any, any questions from any of the commission members?
Through the chair. You know, I listened to, we have two sides here, I listened to both sides. I've developed property in this town. I've had one property go through many appeals that put me back many, many years, and it wasn't fun. I had another property that I developed, Hawkeridge Winery, and we had a lot of neighbors complain about that site, and what I did is I listened to the neighbors. I'm concerned that we have two people, two groups here that have concerns. They want, you have, we want to develop the property, I want to see the property developed. They're worried. They're worried about the unknown. They don't know what's going to happen. They don't know what the traffic's going to be like in their front yard, and I'm afraid that if we do approve the application, there's going to be another appeal, and you're going to be exactly what I went through when I tried to build my property where uncommon real is. So I think we have to, as a commission, have to have some idea what the property's going to look like, and you're going to want to do that so there's not another appeal, and they're going to be happy that, okay, they listened to us, and we're happy with what they're going to do, and we're 100% behind it, because you want your neighbors to be happy, because they're going to be the ones that are going to be going to this property also. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission? Any comments? All right, so, okay, I want to just say that I think this commission is in favor of the development of this site. I can say that unconditionally. This commission is in favor of the development of this site, okay? We don't want to be an impediment to this process, okay? We want to try to be reasonable, fair, and practical, and we'd like to find a common ground, all right? We do want to get it right, all right? We also recognize that nobody's ever accused the applicants as not being qualified. We think the applicants are very qualified, and all are outstanding citizens, all right? And they all have the financial ability to do a project and do a nice job on it. I think they would like to do a nice job on it, okay? I believe that, truthfully, all right? We also know the history of zoning, which we've heard from Attorney Pillisi numerous times, and we've heard your presentation, and we agree, and we don't want to be the impediment to any kind of decent development that would improve the property in Oakville, all right? However, we know, I don't understand why we have to be the exception to the estate of Connecticut and do a PDD different than all the other areas of the state. The town of Nogatuck, the city, the borough of Nogatuck, I understand they're open-ended PDD, but they don't have an applicant in front of them. This is like an invitation to come in, and eventually that applicant would have to give them a master conceptual plan, all right? We'd like to work together with the applicant to get this going and have this development. Attorney Pillisi, you said you didn't want to be adversarial, but saying that you're not willing to compromise or to work with us is, well, we're offering the olive branch, we want to do this, just give us something that we could look at, all right, is how I look at this land use consultant's suggestions, all right? We would like to fast-track this. We understand your concerns. If you came up with a couple, you know, the possibility of a couple possibilities, so that if you had somebody who wants to do a supermarket, or somebody who wanted to do a restaurant or something with a drive-through, okay? If you had it in a plan, and then we could, we could approve three or four or five options, and say, okay, we're going to do this one, I mean, we'd be open to doing that. I believe we would, okay? I can't speak on behalf of all the commissioners here, but on behalf of myself, I say, you know, we, that would be something that we could, we certainly would look at, all right? I think being, having, integrating it into the neighborhood would be a nice idea, and I appreciate the input of the neighbors and the public, appreciate Mr. Chalder's hard work on putting this presentation together, appreciate the applicants and their application. And if the commission, the land use consultant, the applicant, the town, the planning official, or the commission has no other comments, I'd like to thank everybody for this, and we can continue the public hearing till next Wednesday, when it's, when it's going forward. There's time, we have time, we have plenty of time on this. We don't have to make a decision tonight, do we?
No, you have an extension of time, and I believe it was 28 days, was the applicant granted an extension of 28 days to the February regular meeting.
Okay, so a decision has to be made by the next regular scheduled meeting of the commission, and we have to close the public hearing also.
Well, not necessarily. You can still get, well, it's up to the applicant if they, Attorney Pillisi stated that they're unwilling to give any further extensions to past February 1st. If that's the case, then in, and the next meeting next week, you would close the public hearing.
Okay.
But then you have 65 days to act on the application after that.
Right, right, okay. We have till next week, and everybody can go home and think about this?
Absolutely.
And come back to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close this particular special meeting.
So moved.
You have some debate, discussion?
Oh, I, I thought the motion was going to be to continue it to the February 1st meeting.
All right, I entertain a motion to continue it to the February 1st meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned.